Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 13, 2022, and it is 6:05, and we're meeting in the North High School Boardroom. Ms. Johnson is here. Ms. Lampier?
Yes. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. No problem. I mean, it's getting close to Christmas. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Fine. So what I want to do is, I know that Dr. Andre has a tight schedule tonight, so I want to bring forward the redistricting RFP to the beginning of the meeting. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay. Dr. Andre?
What's that? It was too quick. I was pulling up the information. So we would like to make our recommendation tonight for a redistricting consultant to come in to really work with us on the redistricting project. The RFP includes a demographic study of the district for the next 10 years, a redistricting plan with three options, meetings with the administration in the community, up to four public meetings in that regard. So we know that redistricting is going to be a big project. We think it's really important that we have some outside experts lead us through this project. So we are making a recommendation for approval to negotiate with Business Information Resources based on a review experience capabilities and price. Like I said, this redistricting is going to be a pretty big endeavor. We know the community voice is going to be important to get. We know that we want up to four community meetings and then also work internally with our redistricting committee on making sure we're looking at the right information kind of moving forward. So that being said, I'm hoping that we can receive a recommendation tonight to negotiate with, I just lost the company again, Business Information Services to start this work, starting in January, and the work will go through May with a recommendation to the board by the end of May, early July.
Okay. Have we gotten any references on this company?
As part of the RFP, we received
Okay.
references on all the companies. I mean, basically, we sent this out. We received four responses. Two of them were significantly higher than the other two, so that, to the extent that that sort of pushed them off the table. And then we looked at the other two, and we were more impressed with the submittal from Business Information than we were with the other. I have spoken with them, mentioned that we were going to bring forward a recommendation, and if we did that, could they, do they still have the staff in time to do the work? And then they said they did.
The reason I'm asking because we didn't get anything for references in the packet. So I know that, I usually like to read a couple here and there.
Yes, and I have both of the responses that I brought with me. I also have a, if someone wants an electronic, I have a little thumb drive. I could send a copy of it that way if you'd like it. But if you want to look at these before the full board meeting on Monday, I'll be happy to drop them with you.
Okay. Any questions from members of the committee?
I would just, I would like to see them too. Just a little concerned. I, you know, I want to make sure that we do a good job of vetting the consultants that we get, because we haven't always had the best experience.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
No questions.
Okay. So I think at least two members, probably Ms. Brown, would probably get an idea. I don't need to see everything. I just, this is the one out of the two that you recommended. We will, I'm sure, pass this and send it to the full board with our recommendations. But I would like to, you know, be able to see references, what other districts use them and how they felt that they responded to their needs.
No, absolutely, and I agree. I think it's, again, in the vetting process. Like, this is a big project. Again, so we can't have the wrong consulting and be led down the wrong pathway. So this is a decision that's going to impact possible many generations. So we need to get it right.
Exactly. And I'm sure a lot of parents are, I hope a lot of parents are going to come out to the public meetings and ask questions and be able to voice their opinions, because it's going to affect them, considering if some students thought that they were going to go to one middle school, and now they're going to be switched to another middle school, with those boundaries might be leaving some of their friends. So I think it's a big issue. Any other questions? Any concerns?
Just if I could just mention one other thing. We did request that they also look at, look at district-wide. I don't think we'll be changing our high schools, but also to look at the elementary schools, to see if they would feed in slightly differently based on all the information. Because this will be the first time they'll do a fully exhaustive study. We, every other year, have been, as part of the budget, doing a demographic study, and it's basically, they just roll numbers forwards on number of students. It's not too, too sophisticated. And to be honest, when I compare it to actuals, it never seems to be all that accurate, but it gives you a general idea. I think this is going to be a more in-depth study, and it'll be interesting to see the information.
Right. I did read that in the proposal. I think that is important, because where we're having most of our students is in the elementary or middle school that we're losing, and they're coming back in the high school. And usually when that happens, it's either they're homeschooled, they're going into charter school, they're in the private school, and then they come back to the high school when they get a different type of foundation that we offer. And so it kind of now tells us, do we need to shift a little bit, where some schools might have more and some might have less within the same perimeter of the boundaries at this point? So I think that's good. Ms. Brown?
In the proposal, did they mention that they'll also be looking into new building projects going on in the area and housing developments and that kind of thing?
Yes, that's part of the process, yes.
Can I make a motion?
Sure can.
So I move to approve, to negotiate the contract with Business Information Resources pending a review of the RFPs.
Second.
Is that motion okay? Okay. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anything else, Dr. Andre, you need to bring to us? Okay. So we've got
I appreciate moving the agenda, so have a good evening. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you for joining us. Okay. Now we'll go back to the original agenda, and we're going to have a proposal. Are we going to have another demonstration or anything? Just a proposal?
I don't think we need another demonstration unless you guys want one.
Okay. So we're basically, everything that we've been told is basically, okay. So we're going to have Santa Life. We have the proposal here. Mr. Donovan?
Well, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith?
Feels like a ball we're throwing back and forth. Yes, good evening. Yeah, you're well familiar with the systems they've provided. We've seen examples of it before, and we asked them to come back with a proposal that matches closely the amount of money that we have available. So we have in front of us a proposal to install Active Pure devices in eight schools, public schools. Those include Amherst Street, Broad Street, Charlotte Avenue, Fairgrounds, Ledge and Sunset Heights Elementary Schools, also at Franklin Street School, and a good portion of Fairgrounds Middle School, primarily the classroom wings. We, as we've documented before, we've actually tested this device in two of our schools, at South High School and at Ledge Street, and we saw a dramatic decrease in, I call them bad bugs, they're coming into the system. We set aside $600,000. The Board of Ed agreed to escrow that. It was approved by the ultimate subsequent to that and for this purpose. In your packet should be the actual proposal that Santa Life provided. It matches the $600,000. It lists the schools I've already mentioned. They also provided the installation plan. Has a lot of pretty pictures of all the different schools. It kind of shows you where these devices will be installed. It's all attached to the ductwork, services all the classroom wings, and should make those schools much more healthy in the coming years. As previously discussed also, this comes with a six-year plan, that they will replace the filters and devices as needed at no additional fee.
Yes. Yes.
Did I pretty much capture everything, gentlemen? Is there anything else you need to?
That captured it. The original plan for installation is we're going to come in here on the 20th to do a walkthrough, and we did everything based on the floor plan, which is want to make sure that what we put on the mechanical draw on the floor plan makes sense. That's going to take two or three days to do the walkthrough. Then we plan on doing the installation on the 27th, if possible, and then it'll take like two weeks to finish it all up.
27th of December, so within a week after schools back up and running, then those eight schools will have their full systems installed.
Pretty impressive turnaround time. Sounds good.
It really is. My question is to you, Mr. Smith. Where we're doing part of the classroom wings at Fairgrounds Middle School. If we didn't do those wings, how much square footage is that? If we didn't do those wings, would that money be able to go to another school? Because I know that this is a brand-new school, brand-new HVAC systems, the intake and the outtake and all that. So that's what I'm wondering, would another school be able to have used this?
Yeah, I understand. So these schools were selected because they have air handling systems, they have ductwork, and this is a device that goes into the ductwork. We do have other schools, of course, that could benefit from this, but they don't have air handlers. They have ventilators in every single classroom. As a follow-on, it's Burchill and Main Dunstable are two elementary schools that will be hopefully renovating in the next few years. I know for a fact that this device is in the budget for those two schools. So that'll leave us with, I wonder, that'll leave us with four elementary schools that we still have to work on. It's not to say that we can't provide some protection of those schools as well, because as we've been doing for the past year, year and a half, two years, however long this pandemic's been going on, we're providing the plug-in units for classrooms, particularly those that we think the ventilation is a little shaky as far as air exchanges.
I think I asked you before, how many of those units do we have out there that could be, are they in any of these schools that we're going in and doing the work, that the equipment can be moved over to the other schools once this is done?
These schools, I mean, just looking at them real quick, I'll answer it a different way. I know where most of them are. They are at Main Dunstable. They are at Dr. Crisp. There are some at Ledge Street, some at Amherst Street. I think those are the primary schools where we've installed them. So of the ones that these are, there's maybe a few at Amherst Street. I want to say we probably have between 70 and 100 district-wide so far.
So my, okay, so you have some. So Ledge Street is going to be done. Amherst Street's going to be done, right?
Correct.
So I guess the ones from Ledge Street and Amherst Street can be moved over to the schools that don't have it. Is that going to be the plan?
Correct. Yes.
And we can get a list of the schools that are remaining after this and the ones that are going to be having the units that are moved?
Yes.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the committee? So then this way we can see what else we possibly need for the budget coming up, which is going to be shortly, I guess? I mean, it's December already. Who would think that we're getting close to budget season again? Who would think?
Still working on my Christmas list.
I would.
Dan says it's always budget season.
I know. And there's always wants from this board, but I feel that this is a good want to help. I mean, we're in disease season coming, and we've already gone into it. So the goal is to keep our students and our faculty, our teachers and everybody healthy so kids can stay in school and be happy. I don't know, happy, some of them are, some of them are not, but anyway. Okay. If we're all agreeable on this? Okay. So I'll move to recommend to the Board of Ed to accept Santa Life's proposal and award them a contract in the amount of $600,000. Funds will be, will come from the aforementioned escrow account.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You can send Catherine. She got out tonight.
Carolyn.
Carolyn. Start with a K.
You guys have a great Christmas. Happy New Year's, and we look forward to having our buildings sanitized more. Thank you.
I was just going to note that we've also
Yes.
in the queue of things for the middle school, want to install this there as well, but we're still waiting to further on in that process to see if we can afford it.
And the new middle school?
For the new middle school in Penachuk.
Well, isn't the prices of lumber and everything coming down because there's not a lot of building at this point? Gas prices are starting to come down, so that should start coming down a little bit?
Well, those, so all the purchasing that's necessary for those schools has pretty much been done. There might be a couple more packages we have to approve. But we're still going, when it comes to the new middle school, we already know that we're going to be short on funds because of the, just what happened over the pandemic time.
I don't know when you negotiate a contract and negotiate the price that should be there and let them deal with it after, not us, the taxpayers. Thanks, guys. Good to see you again. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is deferred maintenance and capital plan, FY '24. Is that you, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it is.
That the floor?
So thank you. So there's a memorandum in your package and a couple of spreadsheets. One of the spreadsheets is deferred maintenance, and the other one is capital plan. I'll talk to deferred maintenance first. I'll talk about the current, the plan for the money we currently have in hand. So after the last couple of years, we received a good amount of deferred maintenance money by various means, and we have about $919,000 in our account. And the plan is pretty much from past deferred maintenance plans that you've seen with a couple of additions. So we're still looking to refurbish the cooling tower at this school. It's at, many of the components are in other service life, and they'd be replaced. I'll be sending out an RFP sometime in the next month, and you'll see the results of that, and hopefully in January. Franklin Street. The programs, the two programs there, both the Brentwood program and the preschool program, jointly decided they needed a better kitchen that was installed originally. So they've gone out and obtained pricing for the kitchen equipment. The food service program, as Mr. Donovan can probably talk to us better, is prepared to pay for that actual equipment, including the hood, which is a key component. But then we still need to pay for the actual installation of the equipment, the utilities and that sort of thing. And $150,000 is my estimate of what that will cost. They'll pay for, as I said, the utilities, the grease trap. In some cases, we've had to install grease tanks. We're hoping to avoid that in this case, but $150,000 covers that sort of thing.
Let me ask you a question on that.
Yes. Yep.
The kitchen that's in there now is how old?
So the school's been open for a year and a half?
But they don't really even have a kitchen right now.
No, it was cobbled together, really, with, I wouldn't call it industrial-grade kitchen equipment. It was a stove and refrigerator and a couple of other pieces. This is actual kitchen equipment you'd actually see in any school. The other aspect of this is the, so we have a bond for Franklin Street, right? Currently, that does not cover the cost to do this. We still have eight months to go with that project. I'll be talking about that later in the program tonight. So this, the kitchen was not something we anticipated when that project started, nor did we budget for it. It was talked about, discussed, agreed to this summer to install a modern kitchen in that school. The service, not only the Brentwood program, which, the kitchen they have right now just serves the Brentwood program, and has strictly for rewarming food, if I'm correct.
Correct.
So they're looking to cook their own food there and then to also service the preschool program. The preschool program's going to have all preschool kids across the district, so that's a couple hundred kids.
Yes, and those students now receive their food at the school they're at. So there's your big difference. You've got 250 students or so that are moving into a school without a kitchen facility. Currently, they're in existing elementary schools. So they get fed at the kitchens at those schools.
So when we decide to move them in, why don't we budget for this instead of now asking? It's coming out of the food service account. Am I correct?
The equipment and the hood, et cetera, is coming out of the food service account.
Their line item account.
Yes, their special revenue fund budget, yes.
Okay. And we're not going to fall short on that account if we take $150,000 out?
No. The 150 is not, the cost of all the equipment, including the hood, is $45,000 or so. That's coming out of the food service fund. So that's, you know, they generate revenue with the grant and people who pay, and then, so that's coming from all that. There's no effect on the taxpayer, so to speak. This is Mr. Smith's estimate to do the work to hook everything up and the electric cone, the grease trap, and in my opinion, it's a conservative number, which isn't a bad thing. But it's a conservative number, and if we don't have to do all the things that the city may require, then there should be some funds available left over from this that he can use for other things.
So what are we going to do with the equipment that's there now?
We're using that or just adding to it.
You're just going to add to it?
Yes. The only thing they really have right now, as far as, they have a warming piece, and they'll keep that, and then they have a stove like you have in your house. So you can't run a kitchen for hundreds of kids with a stove you have in your house. So that, I'm not sure what they're going to do with that. That was more for the Brentwood program specifically, to work with those students to show them how to cook a meal, et cetera. That's what that was for. They get their food delivered from either North or South High School every day. That's how they've been getting fed, no matter where they've been.
So if we put this, all this equipment in, we're not going to have to have a delivery person from North or South to feed them? They're going to be self-sufficient now?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on this from anybody?
When do the preschool kids move over to the school officially?
A group of them are there now, and the rest of them will move for next school year.
Okay. So that'll be the next school year?
Yes.
So I'm just wondering about the, I think it seems like it's important, but I'm wondering about the urgency, because I have a question about, has a fire marshal gone to check this out? Because we ran into a problem before with the fire escape and kind of things. With this install of this new equipment, are we going to run into any kind of, you know, I don't know, licensing issues or anything?
Everything will be passed by them. They've already, so they've already inspected the kitchen. They've already approved what we have there. We've had to make some minor modifications. I'll talk about that a little bit later. Just minor stuff. So when we present this new layout, we're going to have the architect actually do the design, how everything connects to the utilities. We're going to present that design to the fire department, to the building department in the city. They're going to approve it, then we'll install it. So we'll get pre-approval before we do anything.
So before we make the final purchase decisions, we are definitely going to make sure that we're not going to install it and then have to do something immediately after?
Well, the stuff we're purchasing, you know, the stove, the oven, stove top, the oven, dishwasher, all those sorts of things are pretty standard that we see in any kitchen, and the installation of them is pretty standard. The really only, I don't even want to call it tricky, because it's not, is the hood and the fire suppression system. That's what the fire marshal's really going to hone in on. And that's not rocket science at all. It's just, we just have to do it correctly, and they have to approve the plan. The ventilation will have to go through the roof, so there's going to be roof penetrations. Luckily, the kitchen's on the third floor, so the roof is right there. So they'll see all those things in advance. We can't wait for the design to be complete, then get their approval, and then order the stuff, because it won't arrive in time, because of supply chain issues. We need to order the material now, have it ready for us in July for the installation.
Yeah, the kitchen, it won't be put in until the summer, so they'll deal with food delivered for the rest of this school year.
I just wanted to ask about food service workers. I don't know how many of them will end up having to be at the school to prepare the meals and stuff, and if we actually have the people to do it.
We'll, I'd have to double-check with Dahlia, the food service director, but there'll be a cook and maybe one other person. It may be, it depends. I would guess two people, and we don't have them yet because we don't have the kitchen yet, so. But if you're a food service worker and become a cook, you get a raise. So I think finding a cook won't be too, too hard.
I bet, like, can you spare two people from the other schools to be at Franklin Street?
No, we'd have to hire new people, probably.
Have you been able to hire anybody for these?
We, it's been difficult. We have enough to keep going bare bones, but we don't, we're down a number of staff members.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So on the third floor, is it going to be at the back end of the school, the front end of the school?
Kitchen is on the
Front.
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 The Franklin Street side.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. The next item under deferred maintenance that we're under, funds that we have currently, is to install, call it fuel-efficient boilers, because you understand that a little bit easier, at Main Dunstable-Burchill. We do have a project in place. We do have bonded money. We do have Esser funded, approved, but those funds do not, are not sufficient to replace both boilers. So in both schools, we have two boilers, the both cast iron sectional boilers. They're old. They need to be replaced, and the project is paying for replacement of one of those at each school. So I'm proposing that we replace the second one with a fuel-efficient boiler. It's kind of, that's the way we've been doing it all our elementary schools for the last decade at least. The way that works is the fuel-efficient boiler kicks, takes care of you during the, like, all the saddle seasons, so the spring and the fall, and then when it really gets cold, then the big boiler kicks in and takes over. The fuel-efficient boiler loses its, it's not as efficient when it's really trying to pump out heat in the heat of the, dead of the winter, and that's where the big boiler comes in. So again, these aren't going to be covered by the project, and that's why I'm putting them in here. I think it's important that we do replace those boilers.
So when are we starting the project on these two schools?
This coming summer.
In the summer?
Yes.
Definitely this summer?
Yes.
Okay. So these are going to be purchased now and put on the side, so when the project starts, or we're going to purchase them in the summertime when the project starts, that we have these boilers?
Yes.
So what happens if the prices go down and we're paying high prices? So, what happens if the prices go down, and we're paying high prices now?
Again, I think lead time is going to require that we buy them now, if we want them in time for the summer. Then it's the roll of dice. I mean, wait a year and then buy them next year? It could.
And I'm just asking, because everything is always hurry up and spend the money, and then, you know, it's not ready for the project now, and, you know, things can happen, prices goes down, you know, versus going up for a change. I mean, the gas is coming down, well, the price of gas, who would think? Gas prices are coming down to low threes now.
True. Prices could go up, too. Who knows? None of us know that.
But I'm just asking that question.
Right, yeah, but we do need the boiler, we do need to replace the boilers, and the project starts next summer. If we order them in the next month or so, they'll be delivered in time for the summer for installation.
Questions, Ms. Brown?
Will the new boilers work with the heating system and the new duct work that we're gonna be using as we put the walls up in between those schools? Like, is the heating system going to stay the same?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be totally revamped. So, that's what the ESER funds are paying for. It's paying for all the new duct work, all the new perimeter heating, the unit ventilators are gonna be taken out. It's all gonna be a system similar to what we have at Penachuk. You've been there recently. So, you're gonna be having those displacement diffusers that come down in the corners of the classroom. You're gonna have baseboard heating, but that's all gonna be new piping. It all comes back to the boiler room, to these boilers.
Okay, so this is the, this is the new boilers that will be used throughout the units to use them, do the work? Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Lamb, for you?
Oh, I'm sorry, my question's actually maybe a little off-topic. I was just wondering if there's been any improvement in the supply chain stuff since, over the past couple of months, or if it's still just as bad?
It depends. We just, just today or yesterday, were able to receive a quote to purchase a replacement kitchen truck. So, that was in a 2021 budget. Here we are, 2023. The vendors told us, don't even, for the last two years, don't even bother ask us, because we don't have them in the queue. So, they just, Monday, gave us a quote to buy one of those trucks. So, I have to go back to the city and say, okay, and it's also more expensive than, of course, it was in 2021, by at least 10 grand. So, I have to go back to the city and say, you know, can we still purchase it with those SUR funds, and can you chip in a little bit extra money? But, so I don't necessarily see some improvement, but I wouldn't count on it.
I don't know.
If I go food shopping, you know, sometimes you see stuff and sometimes you don't.
I know, in the clothing industry, I'm seeing tons of merchandise coming in. Must've been sitting on the barges from China, you know? I don't know, maybe the mayor will be kind. He just gave us this big increase on our taxes, so I'm sure he has an extra 10 grand to throw out there. He didn't do a great job in cleaning the streets.
So, if there's no questions more on that one, I'll go to the next item. I wanna replace the pavement in front of Fragons Elementary. If you've been over there recently, it's pretty bumpy, alligator, some potholes. We've stayed on top of it with the help of Public Works, as they come over with their asphalt patcher, but it's time to replace that.
That's gonna be done in the spring?
It'll be done in the summertime, when school's out of session, yes. Good thing about deferred maintenance funds is they don't expire, so I can even do some of the stuff next year. I anticipate the cooling tower, for example, we'll do the RFP, we'll award the contract late winter, but the work probably won't be done until next fall after the next cooling season.
I had two comments on the Fragons Elementary paving. When we do that work, can we really try hard to plan that it gets ground down and paved back-to-back, like, really work on the timing for the companies? Because we've struggled with that through the city over the last few years. And just because, if you do it in the summer, we want it to be finished before the kids go back to school, just for safety. That's more a comment than anything else. Also, a question in that same vein, I know that half of the road out here leading up to North is city property until you get to the neighborhood, and half of it is ours. When you go down and ask them for an extra $10,000, if you wanna throw in some kind of negotiation for fixing these potholes out here, just because there's a lot of teenagers that are driving down that road, and it's getting pretty rough out there. Is that, is this because of the original parking lot?
It is, it is. You'll see once we get into the capital projects, monies for that.
Don't you understand those potholes are speed bumps? For high school students?
So, so, next thing, building automation controls for Dr. Crisp. You approved a similar effort at Bicentennial, probably two months ago. This just continues that. And then, Mr. Donovan can talk about this next one a little bit better than I can, but when we purchased Franklin Street, part of the agreement was, we had an easement over two parking lots to park on. About the very first parking lot is your, next to the school, but the next two. And those two parking lots are in disrepair, I guess is a good word I'd use, and including some potholes and that sort of thing. So, part of the agreement is we could exchange for a reduction in what we owe them. You want, you wanna talk about this? Maybe?
Yes, we brought this up, I think it was last month, so we paid off, we own the building now, we paid off in advance, and with that, we received a $25,000 reduction, which we're going to use in effect towards the parking lots. 25 was used, because the quote we had was in the high 40s to do this work. They weren't able to do it. We were hoping to do it before winter season came. The company couldn't get it done in time, so it'll be done probably in the summer at this point. So, but Mr. Smith has bumped the number up, as he does conservatively with all his costing. So, I would hope it would be closer to 50 than 60, especially with the cost of some oil products going down. We shall see.
Yes, if petroleum prices continue to go down, then that also affects the price of asphalt. That will go down. So, the price, this is admittedly conservative a bit, but I also will have to re-line parking spaces, which shouldn't be that much money. So, that's what I plan to do with the money we have in hand. Looking to my suggested request for next year, it amounts to $1,160. We've never received that much money, but just looking at the backlog we have of about 14 and a half million, we're never gonna get there unless we make some inroads. Part of the reason why we end up with these expensive bonded projects for schools is we don't pay the money as we go for deferred maintenance. A lot of these projects, if you look at my deferred maintenance and you try to group together schools, you'll see, like, new Searls in a few years, it's quite a few projects. Well, one of the things we could do is say, okay, that's gonna be a bonded project. If we had the foresight, as a city perhaps, to put money aside in deferred maintenance every year, a little bit more than what we're getting, then we could attack those things bite-size instead of bonding big projects. But it's a financial choice. So, for next year, I'm proposing that we repair and overlay and re-line the track at this high school. This past summer, we replaced the track at the South High School, which included, basically grinding up the entire asphalt and using that as a base, and then putting new asphalt down and a new rubberized surface. This, the school's track was actually redone probably about a dozen years ago. We had to do it, because it wasn't done right the first time. So, it's, what we have now is actually in pretty decent shape, but the rubberized surface has to be replaced, or at least upgraded, oversprayed. So, that's what this project does.
So, let me ask you a question. So, when we built this high school, and we knew that this was built on a 100-year-old floodplain, and we knew, after we built it, even probably before, the track always flooded on the back. So, that turf was not, the overlay on the track was not done correctly when we first built the school? Is that?
That's my recollection, yes.
Okay, I kinda tried to recollect all this, too.
Yes.
Because I was against buying the Brock's property here because of the floodplain, you know? A couple of little screw-ups here. The front is the back, and the back is the front now. So, it wasn't done correctly, so it cost us money to fix it. We paid out of our pocket to fix it, because it was done wrong?
I would say that's partially correct. We also took the site contractor, and it went to court, but we ended up with some, perhaps out-of-court settlement with them because of various issues that were wrong with the site. I know, for example, the fields were, soils were too compacted, and so grass was not growing, so we, that was one of the many issues in the site that they had to correct, and they gave us a lot of money. We spent a lot of money, you know, bringing those up to speed. So, the city did receive some money. I don't know if we can tie that directly to what we've done since.
I just wanna clarify, because I remember the culverts were all clogged, too, that was backing everything up.
Yes.
If I remember correctly. I mean, short-term memory isn't great, but long-term is fantastic.
Yes, there are some culverts that go under the, there's a stream that goes down there. DPW actually is responsible for maintaining those, keeping them clear. We have a practice field, which is kind of a lower field, like the Elks practice out there. You'll see lights out there late at nighttime during the fall. That's where they practice. That's actually set up to be the floodplain. That was built, actually, to absorb water at a quick rate. Part of what we did after we received those monies is put a pump to pump the water out at a greater rate, in case there's a 100-year flood. It was strange, because within the first five years of the opening the school, we had two 100-year floods. And both years, we saw geese floating around in that football field, not on the track, but that field that was next to it. One guy was out there with a kayak floating around, so it was interesting.
I was gonna say, it was free admission, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But we digress, I think.
Anybody have any questions on this?
You know, I think, I think it's important to keep the upkeep, and not only do the high school kids use that track, but that's one of the places that the Gate City Striders, the local running group, they also use that, and a lot of, a lot of locals do go walk, go down and walk on that track. So, I do think that's a good thing for upkeep for the city, as well as for the students.
I'm not saying no. I just wanted to get the history back here over what happened.
Oh, no, and I also think we should keep it dry.
Yeah, no, put the big fans out there with the blow dryer. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
So, we've had a longstanding request to install motion detectors in the two high schools. Most of our schools do have motion detectors inside of them. We do have perimeter security, so that, but once you get past that perimeter, if you get past it, then people can create havoc. Within the schools, motion detectors will take that away. Replacing storefronts at Bicentennial Elementary. This is another example of where we can keep on deferring to things until they become a bonded project. We did, I wanna say, five classroom storefronts at Bicentennial a couple of years ago through deferred maintenance. When I talk about storefront, if you think of looking at the outside of a classroom, it usually contains a doorway and windows, and usually underneath the windows is a unit ventilator in some of our older schools. That's a storefront. So, it's all the metal that creates, it's the frame, the door, the windows, that's the storefront. So, those are rotting out, basically, at Bicentennial, and that's why we need to replace them. We've done some in the past. We're looking to chip away at it over time, instead of waiting until we have another bonded project in five or six years.
A question on that one? Is there any issue with the roof or the side, like, the facade of the building that is causing that rot?
No, I think just, no, it's just metal, it's just rotting. I mean, the roof itself is getting old. It's in my list of, some deferred maintenance list for later on.
And actually, I have a question about the motion detectors of the high schools. Is that inside or outside?
Inside, inside.
So, a hallway is no movement for several hours, it go, it will ignore it, and then somebody walks down it?
Yes. Develop a facility master plan. I've had this in the queue for a couple of years. It's, the city has a master plan, but the school district does not have a master plan. I really think we should have one. I mean, we should have a good sense for what we have for facilities, what's in the facilities, how old all the systems are. I mean, we can piece together one ourselves, a rudimentary one, but it'd be good for, after we're not sitting here anymore, and as other people follow us, they have a plan to follow on when things should be replaced.
Isn't there a computer program that you can do that with? Because I, you know, $350,000, I think that's a lot of money, could be used elsewhere. I don't know what the city's master plan is. They have master plan, I think, on top of master plan, and they don't know which plan is what anymore. I'm just concerned with that, that there can't be a program that you can, you know, put the information in and it can draw up a plan for us?
There may be something we can do cheaper. I think it's listed here, just that it's something that should be done. I mean, if you take a look at Sean Smith and Gary Connors, and if they get hit by a bus tomorrow, you'd lose so much knowledge on the buildings right away, that nobody else really has. So, I think when you own 18 buildings, you need to have something. Can it be done cheaper than this? I hope so. But I think having it here and at least starting to think about when we do it, because it's not, if you wait till five years, then, you know, I'm not wishing bad things on Sean, but, you know, it's, he's not gonna be here forever.
I just, well, part of my concern is that we keep hiring all these outside contractors, companies, to do work for us. And I'm thinking, there has to be some type of computer program that if anybody needs to go in and update, correct things, add something, that has to be, we have to hire somebody again to put, add something into a master plan? That's, that's what my thinking is. And, you know, we keep hiring people, and it's, I think some of this money could be better well-spent on maybe another project here that's deferred maintenance.
I don't disagree, and I, this isn't rocket science. I mean, it's something that Gary and I and Mr. Donovan could probably put together over time, but we don't have the time. That's where bringing somebody in to do it for us. So, the 350 number came from an architect. I said, what would it cost to do a master plan? They said, well, how many schools do you have? And I told them, and that's the number they came up with. Could it be done cheaper? Probably.
So, yeah, I think, I actually think having, developing a master plan is a great idea. I think having it sooner than later is a good idea, because, so that we can plan for the future. This does seem like crazy sticker shock, and I would ask for quotes from about 10 more architects before I went with this one. I mean, the fact that we've got this huge redistricting thing coming up, and that was only in the $48,000 range, I would hope that with the amount of knowledge that you possess, and Gary, and Dan, and those kind of things, that you could find a company that could do this project for significantly less money. Like, yeah, much less, because 350 seems like, there's a lot of other projects that could get done for that amount of money. But I do support the concept, and I think it's worth sending out an RFP and putting that on the horizon, but I don't know if I could bite off $350,000.
This actually sounds like a nice retirement job for Mr. Smith.
Now, now, one thing about these items that we're going over now, that started with the track overlay at North, these are simply requests for future, for next year or after. So, none of these things are gonna be done this year. There'll be no RFPs sent out. There's no funding for them yet. Each year, we go through this process, we share it with the board, then we go and we meet with, there's a committee, a capital improvement committee at the city, and then you end up with what you end up with, with in the budget. And I can almost guarantee you that 1.1 million, we won't get that. I mean, this year, we got $260,000. I mean, this year, we got 260,000. So, no, that's kind of what it is. All this will not get done, and hopefully, some of Mr. Smith's costs on the other items that he spoke to earlier will be less, and some of that money can fall in here.
But, I mean, if you're going to go to the capital improvement committee, I remember those days between this board and the other board, to ask for $350,000 for, you know, master plan here, I don't think that's going to go very far. That's why I'm trying to think out of the box. Can we get a program? Can we, RFPs? I mean, if you're going to ask this of the capital, if you're going to bring this to the capital improvement committee, then if you really want this done, I would get some more quotes on this, because this is, I think it's an outrageous number, to do a master plan, you know.
I agree, but the mechanics of working with the capital improvement committee, we're going to ask for
Yep.
a deferred maintenance sum. We're never going to get this much, they're going to give it lower. They're not going to look at each individual project and say, cut this out, cut that out. They're just going to give us an amount of money for deferred maintenance based upon this list of needs.
So it can be cut out by us if need be. But if it's so important, then I think that we need to look at other options here, if we really need this done for future. And so we make sure we're on a schedule, we know what needs to be done, and that Mr. Smith retires, then the next person can pick it up and just open up the book and see where we need to go from there. Anything else on that? Did we belabor this point enough? Okay, go on, Mr. Smith.
So, next item we actually touched on earlier, pavement repairs at the North High School. So if, and you have, you have driven around the Loop Road, you've come into the parking lot, and we have a lot of damaged pavement. Surface is 20 years old. So it's, we actually had a study done for us, recommended by Public Works, that it was well in excess of a million dollars. That was probably seven or eight years ago we did that study. So I'm just taking a look, look at what we can possibly do very quickly. It's about $100,000 worth of work. Actually, if you go to my plan, I have it, I believe I've got it down there. So I've spread it over three years. So it's 100,000, then 150, then 150. That'll enable us to keep a lid on it, keep it in reasonably good shape.
Can the city do any of that work for us? DPW, we pay for us?
Typically, for what I think I'm envisioning with this, they would suggest that we tack on to their contract. So they contract out themselves every year. They bring in Continental or whoever they bring in to, they're paying for us. We can latch on to that contract, if that's what you mean. They have some limited, they do patching of holes. They do have a sidewalk machine that'll do a narrow path for you.
But they did the downtown sidewalks really great. Look at how wide they are.
Mm-hmm.
It was the city who did that whole thing under Maurozzo.
Is that project something we could kind of earmark? I doubt it, this is kind of off the subject on a different bucket of money. Are we expecting a surplus at the end of the year? Are we on target for that? Or do not want to talk about it yet? It's okay, I don't want to lift a cat out of the bag.
No surplus talk in December.
No? Okay. All right. Well, maybe it's something on our wish list, if there's a chance of anything happening, that might be a good thing to prioritize, like in the million-dollar range that's getting up there.
Yeah, when we created this year's utility budget, we didn't anticipate things going up as high as they did. Luckily, we had a lot of, the basic rates, we had locked in. But I suspect those utility lines might be taking a hit nonetheless. Okay, next item, some of the older classroom wings at Amherst Street, the roof was not addressed in the 1997-98 project, so I'm looking to replace those roofs. We did some tennis court repairs at this high school several years ago. Want to do some preventive maintenance at the South High School. This was fairly extensive, the work we did here. The cracks were that thick in some cases. I don't want them to get that thick at the South High School, so this is more preventive in nature. Stellus Stadium, this is the design fee for replacing the turf, also to do some additional work around the facility that the athletic director has requested. For example, if you go on the concourse, underneath the seats, you look up, all the, everything, all the paint's peeled off of the ceiling. So it's looking kind of shoddy that way, and she has some other ideas for the outside.
So let me ask you a question, I'm going to interrupt. Why do we need a design fee? The facility is already there. It's been there for what, 22 years? Because I was on the board when they built it.
Mm-hmm.
Why do we need a design fee? Now, the turf has been replaced already, am I correct? At least once?
Once, yes.
Okay. So why do we need a design fee? Why do we need a design fee if we're going to paint? And what's so important that we have to do with the outside at this point in time?
It's more, well, it's more replacement of the turf itself.
Okay, so what do we need a design?
We're going to do an RFP to replace the turf.
Okay.
There are different types of turf out there. We're not, I know the new Park and Rec director is not a fan of what we have in place, he thinks there's better alternatives out there. So we need somebody to put together that RFP for us. It may not cost $60,000, but that's...
But I'm just kind of curious. We're going to put out an RFP. So what is the design fee for? Are we redesigning the facility?
No, no.
Okay.
This is just for the replacement of, primarily a replacement of the turf.
Okay.
I mean, you're right, for painting the concourse, I mean, we don't need a RFP for that.
No, but, I mean, the last time we replaced it, we put out an RFP, but it didn't cost $60,000 for a design replacement. They're just going to be replacing the turf, it depends on what type of turf you want to get, how much it's going to cost. So if we have a budget here, you know, Parks and Recs might want one kind, and we can say that, you know, this is in our budget, it's going to last the same amount. If Parks and Recs wants a different one, let them kick in for it, out of their line item in their budget. You know, this is what I keep hearing, this one wants this, this one wants that. I don't understand what a design fee is for. We put out an RFP, which we can do here, am I correct?
Yes.
It's not going to cost anything for us to put out the RFP, right? No. So why do we need $60,000 for a design fee?
Well, we want to replace the turf.
Okay.
There are various types of turf out there. We want to put an RFP together that captures that.
Okay, we can do that.
The last time we did this, it was not a simple replacement of the turf. I don't know that this next one will be a simple replacement of the turf. Remember, last time, we had to do a lot of drainage work underneath the turf, because there are a lot of places where water was collecting or not collecting. There were various issues. We had somebody design all that for us. It was not a trivial undertaking, it was not an RFP that Sean could write to do all that.
But we know the problems that we had the last time, where the drainage was, am I correct? That they had to go in and fix it.
Mm-hmm.
So if that design was done correctly, then we shouldn't have the same problems right now.
Should not have the same problems right now.
Exactly.
Right.
So if we do an RFP, you're going to put in the RFP that we've had whatever, like drainage problems, and we've got to make sure that this is done right, that whatever we need for the drainage. I just don't, we did the design the last time, so all we are is replacing, and it should be okay. Have we had any other problems in any other areas or continuous problems once they did that design?
I'll have to talk to the people at, the athletic director.
Okay. Because I want answers to these questions before, you know, again, that's $60,000. So the athletic director, she wants things painted underneath, okay, you know, it's aluminum, things need to be cleaned up. What does she want out on the front of the building? She wants to change the facade? That we need a design fee?
No, I don't think it goes into that. That cut doesn't come under the $60,000. This is strictly for an engineering firm to come in and design the turf replacement.
I just, I can understand if it was a brand-new field, when we first built it, you have a designer come in to design the turf and the field. The field has been there for what, 21 or 22 years already, right? We replaced it once.
Mm-hmm.
Please justify that $60,000.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Would you talk to the, just out of curiosity, would you talk to the athletic director, or would you talk to the building facilities manager of Stellus about those kind of things, since you think you'd be like onsite more?
I would speak to both of them.
Okay.
I mean, Lisa's people, the ones that play on the field, her coaches are the ones that play on the field. We have somebody that maintains the field, that's the Park and Rec director.
And has, have there been recent complaints about, I mean, besides the fact that the turf is aging out, has there actually been like any kind of drainage or...
Not that I've heard.
Okay. Except for me, about the quality of the horn hanging up there, but you can probably do that for less than $60,000.
The horn?
The horn, the connected to the scoreboard, the announcer, and the, yeah, basically, the audio equipment there needs a major upgrade, too. Put that in the, on the list.
Is the horn pointing at Mrs. Johnson's house?
Yeah.
It's pointing at the river and comes around.
Yeah. Actually, I can hear it. I live on this side of the river, and I can hear it once in a while, but it breaks up and crackles. I think there's some kind of systemic problem. But it does not have anything to do with drainage, I don't think.
Okay, we'll revisit that one. I've had this on the list for a number of years, we keep on bumping it down. We replaced the boiler controls at the South High School because we were told they're no longer supported by the manufacturer. We salvaged the old controllers, the South High School. One of them was totally dead, we couldn't do anything with it. We salvaged with them, we have them sitting on the shelf. If we had a catastrophic failure of a boiler, of a controller at the North High School here, we could take one of those that we have off the shelf and stick it in, and we'd be fine. But this looks to replace the controllers with brand-new controllers. It's very low on my list of priorities here, but that's the request. And finally, this has been in our list for a while as well, the small engine lab at the South High School. So if you drive around the school, and you're actually sitting in my office looking up, they have a small engine laboratory, and there's an overhead door that is probably open 90% of the time I look up there. They say they keep it open so they can avoid fumes, easy, ease of coming and going. There is a ventilation system in there, they're supposed to connect whatever engines that are running to, and it's supposed to evacuate smoke and whatnot, but we can do better. So this project would improve the ventilation. I'm also concerned about having that door open all the time, just security-wise. We looked at, we talked about actually putting a fence around the whole thing, and the fire marshal didn't like that idea. So this addresses ventilation.
So if we're having a ventilation problem in there, why isn't this on the top of the list? Because of the fumes? And if there's fumes, why don't they have a fan, even though the door's open, doesn't have to be, open up a window, and have the fan push the fumes out?
Probably could, yeah.
The reason I'm, I'm saying this is because I know my husband and my son are mechanics, and I watch it all the time with the fumes and the doors being open if they're working on trucks in the garage, you know? And usually garages, we know when they have the tailpipe, they have a pipe, a plastic tube, and it goes out the door.
That's what they have.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
I'm wondering, I mean, this does seem like a very important thing. Is this something that might qualify for the Perkins grant under the CTE?
Don't know, I'd have to ask if they consider it an improvement or not. Yeah, we could, we could ask.
All right. Might be worth it.
So if you look at the spreadsheet, I've got deferred maintenance. It runs anywhere from 1 million to close to 2 million a year, up through FY '28. I've lumped everything else into FY '29 and beyond. And I've got two items down here, replace the roof membrane and insulation at Burt Hill, Main D. I'm just carrying out that here until I'm sure that it's going to be covered by the project. And to date, I haven't got that assurance. So everything comes to almost $15 million. So that's deferred maintenance. Capital projects, as you know, we've almost done at Fairgrounds Middle School. We have a few things we're going to finish over the winter break. Penachuk, we're also coming very close to the end. If you look at the chart I have in the very back, you'll see stuff actually goes out till fiscal year '25 at Penachuk. And the reason for that is, oh, let me back up. They're going to be finishing the media center this month, so then we'll be able to take the library and move it to the new spaces over Christmas vacation break. Then the last piece that they have within the school is where the library used to be. They'll finish that in February and March. After that, they're done, there's some outside work that they still have to wrap up in the spring, after the snow and ice disappear, they'll come back and look at trees and shrubs that didn't survive the winter and replace that sort of thing. The other thing that the Joint Special School Building Committee is considering is dehumidification of the school. That is not in the project up to this point. We did have the architect design for that as an amendment to their contract. They've done so, and Harvey Construction is giving us costing on various portions of the school. So the first priority was the new classroom wings, then the old classroom wings, then the tech ed wings, cafeteria, and gymnasium. So we're like four alternates after the primary thing. We haven't received all those costs yet, and once we do, then we'll see how much money's left in the project and see what we can actually accomplish. If we do anything, that's why I'm saying 2025, it will extend for a couple of summers potentially.
Are all the, at Fairground Middle Schools, do they have dehumidification?
They do.
They don't?
Yes, 100%. McCarthy Middle School, you've probably heard, seen everything, it's well underway, it's still on track for completion for the '24-'25 school year. So middle of August 2024, that should be complete. Franklin Street School, I'll actually talk about that a little bit later, but we did return to school the Monday after Thanksgiving. The recent additions to the capital plan are Main Dustable and Burt Hill. Those are going to be addressed in depth at the Joint Special School Building Committee on Thursday. Just briefly, we took a list of all the wishes and desires of the project, talking to the principals, seeing what they wanted to have done, that amounted to much, much more money than we had. So we chopped, 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 and came down to a budget that meets the bonded and the SRF funding. So we'll be unveiling what actually is going to be done on Thursday with that. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag just yet, but that will track along, that will...
All the walls, right?
Pardon?
They're going to put up all the walls, right?
Yes, so that project was always intended to put up walls and replace the HVAC system and add dehumidification to it. So that's all still in place, that's still job number one. So that will happen. That'll all start late spring, early summer. I actually met today with the architect for the Security Vestibule project, so I'm not going to name those three elementary schools, you probably know who they are, but we're kicking off that effort. I have to do an RFP to award a construction manager, so you'll probably see the results of that sometime next month to award that contract. May have to award a surveying contract, a geotactical... May have to award a surveying contract, a geotactical, a couple of contracts we'll have to award. But I'll do RFPs and you'll see the results next month. So for the coming year of FY '24, we're requesting funding for the replacement of the turf at Stellos Stadium. Talked about the improvements there. I need, I do need to get better definition of that. Mr. Johnson, you're absolutely correct. But that's the number I've assigned to it at this point. And then security replacements. So when we go to capital improvement, to capital improvement committee, I'll be asking for the turf replacement and the security replacements. If you think about our security access control system is almost 10 years old now. A lot of these cameras that we originally installed are 10 years old. They're at the end of their service life and need to start replacing them. If you look forward in the capital plan, some of the big ticket items that you'll see are, I put down the $2 million for the North High School. If we start chipping away at it through deferred maintenance, we can reduce that quite a bit. And then about two years after the fact, 2027, same thing at the House, South High School. I put a, it's just a placeholder at this point. That pavement is holding much, holding together much better than the North High School. But that was an existing site, if you remember. That school was there since the mid 70s. So everything was all well compacted. There's very little movement of asphalt there. So that FY '27, I stuck it there. That could very well move out towards FY '30. That's really about it. At some point, there's other schools waiting to queue to be renovated. There's New Surles, Bicentennial, Dr. Chris, Mount Pleasant. I do feel the city's been very good to us, helping us maintain the schools though.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Nothing? I think we did it all as we went along here.
It was really thorough. Well done.
And you have another one for us, Mr. Smith?
Do you want to skip your grants or should I go right into Franklin Street?
Let's do the grants quick. There's one other, item four is the, three, sorry, is the safe grants. That's the funding that the state has. And mostly Mr. Lassard has been requesting these grants. We requested a lot of them. It seems like most of the smaller amounts were approved because they can give out a lot more grants for smaller amounts than they can trying to fulfill one or two large ones. So we recently found out that the second round of awards for these safe grants, the first ones are in progress now, but the second ones are listed here. It's a total of 160,000. And most of them, the first ones for a card reader at Bicentennial. And most of the others are for bollards, which would be placed in front of the entrances to prevent vehicles from flying through. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And to replace some of the classroom doors from a safety point of view also. Would that be like a storefront, Mr. Smith? Same sort of thing?
Same sort of thing, yes.
Okay. So this is just informational, letting you know that we are getting at least some of that funding. And so that's some good news.
If you go past Dr. Chris Elementary, you'll see the first of the bollard installations. It gives, gives sense for what they look like.
I, I haven't been over that way recently. Do the bollards, they kind of try to match the architecture of the building? Or they more like safety colors? It's okay.
It's hard, it's hard to make-
You don't say what I want you to say. It's okay.
It's hard to make a bollard look attractive, you know? Actually, Christopher sent me a picture of the most recent ones and I think they're just basic black.
Yeah, a lot of times at a construction site, they're orange or yellow. They won't be that.
That's, that's what I was wondering, if they were like the giant yellow poles or if they were?
Those are for more temporary. These would be permanent, so.
What we're actually looking at, and we've started to, especially for the new middle school, we're going to go back to Penachuk, maybe even Fairgrounds, is alternatives to bollards. So what you're trying to do is inhibit vehicles from crashing into the main entrance or any door for that matter. So anything you can put in this place, it'll stop it works. That could be a bench. So if you go to Fairgrounds, for example, you see those long concrete benches, you know, properly placed, those can stop a vehicle as long as they're firmly anchored. So they're basically attached to a bollard that goes deep in the ground. Those will stop a vehicle on its tracks. So that's alternative to a ugly pole sitting in the middle of the sidewalk.
That's really thoughtful, actually.
We can thank our architect actually came up with those ideas.
You said that they approved smaller projects. Were there any larger projects that weren't approved that you guys are concerned about? Or will we address those at another time?
Oh, part of these were some of the security vestibule work. We figured we're not going to get that sort of money. So thus, we've got the bonding for that. I'd have to double check with Mr. Lassard to see if he has, what else is still left in the queue. But I don't think there's a whole lot left in the queue.
I think one of the largest bonded projects we got in the first round was a shooter identification system.
Yes.
Which we got for the new middle school. So it's a system that will detect a gun going off. It'll tell, tell the police department right away where it was in the school, what the caliber of the weapon was, you know, it'll pinpoint exactly where it is. So it's, it's like something that, you know, left our own devices and our own funding, we could, couldn't possibly afford it. But with the grants, we're able to do that sort of thing. That's probably the most expensive thing that we're receiving.
Of these safe grants, yes.
Do you need a motion for that?
Not for that, but for the other item, to approve the plan. And we will make a couple of changes when we bring it forward to the full board. But if you can approve the capital improvement and deferred maintenance plan.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll do it if you could repeat the wording again.
To approve the deferred maintenance and capital, capital improvement plan.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the deferred maintenance and capital improvement plan.
And I'd like to add to it, waiting for additional information to be received.
Yes, well, any changes to it, we'll, I'll make, make known to the board on Monday night. No, you can't.
Okay. I don't really want to second it either. There's, there's a few things in here that are giving me a little bit of heartburn. But, but as this moves forward, just for some peace of mind for me and the community, each of these things has to come back before us, before-
Oh, yes. You're not approving the purchase of any of these items. Even the first set, that was the 900,000 or so that Mr. Smith talked about, each of those items, as they come forward, have to be RFP'd and approved. The, the second part where most of the discussion happened, that's just a plan. And what you want to prevent, you want the capital improvement committee to know, yes, this is coming, this is coming, this is coming. The numbers don't have to be exact because they're not spending it right now anyway. But they want to let everyone know. Because the worst thing is to go to the alderman or the mayor or this group and say, oh, we need money for that. Well, how come it wasn't in your plan? So if you take things out of the plan and then you ask for it at some point become, because it becomes an emergency, that's the question you're going to get. So it's just a plan. You're not approving the funding because you don't, you don't approve the funding anyway. That's a city approval.
And the reason we're here tonight is because in January, we have the capital improvement committee we go to.
All right, I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. Okay, the next thing is to Franklin Street update.
Okay, so the good news is we reoccupied the building on Monday, the 28th of November. Brentwood was up on the third floor. The preschool program was on the second floor. Last year's preschool was joined by two classrooms from Burt Hill. So they're all, second floor was totally rehabilitated. New floors, fresh coat of paint, new bubblers, new bathrooms, toilets suitable for preschool children and very low. You know, even the sinks were at their level and everything else. So very good job was done there. We received a 60-day temporary certificate of occupancy on the preceding Friday. So we have some items we have to deal with. So one of the items that we have never had to work with for any schools in my recollection is something, is filling in all the holes between floors and halls and walls and whatnot. We always do that, but they're, they're especially cognizant of it because of some fires that have occurred in the city. So it's called, I'm missing the word, fire stopping. So it's a substance they put in around a pipe or they, usually around pipes. So there's, it's not just the pipe going through the hole. They, they cover it with other stuff, caulking or whatnot. So there, there are quite a few of those. The two contractors, whenever they're creating a hole, they use that fire stopping and they've been doing it pretty religiously. But this was a, a building that was built late 60s, early 70s. So we have 50 years of holes. And that's where we're getting hit by the fire department to take care of all those in addition to what we'd caused. So that's why they gave us the extra 60 days to take care of that. And we're working through Harvey Construction to care, to care of those things. So they finished the second floor. They're working on the basement as we speak. It'll be done with that by the end of this month. And then the, both programs can take occupancy down there. The contractor is going to continue to work during vacation breaks to get a leg up on next summer's work. All this will be a not to interfere with education, of course. They do have new HVAC throughout the building. So all four floors have new ventilation system, new heating system, new controls, that's good. And next summer, they're, they're going to be remodeling the first floor and the third floor. The roof's going to be replaced, the windows are going to be replaced. We've talked about the kitchen being improved already. The vet, the elevator is original to the building, so we're going to modernize that. And then some site improvements at the outside. You've noticed, if you've been there at all, you've noticed that all the traffic has been rerouted. So it's now a one-way around the entire school clockwise. So Winter Street, which is behind the school, is one-way west to east. And then you, it's that way. We have, on Franklin Street, which was the busy street, there's a drop-off lane that's installed for the parents dropping off the kids. It goes up around Charles Street on the side. And then all the buses are dropping off on Locust Street, which is on the right-hand side as you're facing the front of the school. So it all came together pretty well. It was a race to the finish as usual, but we got there.
Any questions?
I was just wondering if Harvey is working on the, adding the fire stopping, like while the kids are there? Or is it something that has to be done all, all during the vacation?
So like they're working in the basement right now. So they'll take care of, there are a lot of holes in the basement. So, and there's, there's nobody on the first floor except for the nurse. Greg Warren, the principal's on the first floor and a receptionist. So there's a lot of areas they can continue to work in. So they, they are doing that. And putting in fire stopping is quiet. It's doesn't, there's no hammering or cutting or that sort of thing.
Thank you for that update. That's good news. Ms. Brown, anything?
All set?
All set.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And we'll, we'll get your tour of Franklin Street at some point.
Good, you knew I was going to ask that.
Up to the superintendent. He's, he's going to take care of that.
Working on it.
Yes.
After the holidays.
We want to get you all in a little yellow bus and drive you around.
That was fun. Thank you, Mr. Smith. If I don't see you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan, we're back to you for the financial report.
Okay, financial report, we'll use the month-by-month one. I got the wrong page. Sorry about that. Okay, the first, first set as usual, salaries and wages. You can take a look for the first two lines, wages, full-time and part-time. They're pretty close to what they were last month, October and November. They're both like months. They're both months with two bi-weeklies and four weeklies. So that's basically, that's what the trend is. No concerns there. I updated all my overtime sheets. So I have a view of overtime. We are running lower than we did last year on that line. Probably by about, about 35,000 or so. So we'll see if that continues for the rest of the year. Going down the additional hours, that's 18,000. That's about half that is for the music program, where the students take instrumental lessons with instructors afterwards. The stipends, you can see that number bumped up. It's 31,000 versus been running about 13 or, or 10 or so. That includes the middle school coaches' pay. So that's what most of that bump up is. And next month, you'll see the two high school coaches' pay. So the number will be higher. And retirement and separation pay, I've done my review. All the teachers that retired, that had what I would call, that had their letters in and were receiving close to the maximum amount, which is around $30,000. All those teachers have been paid. So what you'll see for the rest of the year here is basically when people leave, paying out their vacation. So the 13,000 this month was a custodian left. Those, you know, a couple thousand. There was a teacher who had a, he was a teacher that the family's house burnt down. He, he left. And my right-hand man, Derek, left. So there was money for him. Yes, it's been sad.
I'm sorry to see Derek go.
Yes, you're not the only one. He's been gone for about five weeks now and I'm still alive. Okay, so all in all, looking okay on salaries and wages until a couple of months from now when I do a deeper dive. But at this point, I think we're, we should be fine. Fringe benefits, no big issues there. The professional, the technical services, the staffing services, the fourth line down, you can see that number's starting to pick up. Those are the ESS invoices and you'll see a transfer. I'll talk about that when we get to the transfers. So that's where the subs are, that, that ESS are paying are getting paid, not, not from what used to be the labor when we paid them ourselves.
So that is significantly higher, but is that a good thing? Because they're actually filling more slots? Or because we're having more teacher absences because of the time of year?
Well, we're still not filling anywhere near, close to all the teacher absences. So I just think, yeah, there's a, they're starting to fill in with some more bodies. So I would look at that as a good thing.
Yep.
Okay, other than that, not too much on that page. Flipping to page two, took a look at the utilities, electricity, heating, gas and water. Electricity compared to the same five months last year is running lower by about 150,000. Sometimes that's just timing, but that's a good thing. The other two accounts, heating, gas and water through five months are running slightly higher. The heating gas, the reality is most of the invoices are going to show up January through April because that's the December through March months where the, the big costs are and they're typically one month behind. So that's plus 30 through the first five months. So, that's plus 30 through the first five months. So, I'm not too-too concerned. We'll see how that, see how the winter treats us. The water is running higher than last year. That might potentially run over that specific line item a bit. We'll see. But as you can see, if you take a look at the line, $20,000, $20,000, $22,000. So, if it continues at that pace, which I would assume it would, I mean, maybe some of the months with vacations, it would be less, but the cost, Pennachuck cost did go up this year. The HVAC maintenance, you'll see some contracts coming forward, where we approved three-year contracts. Those will show up in December and January, so there'll be, those expected contracts will show up then. Other than that, various maintenance accounts, which low spend at this point in time. The only one that's running a bit higher are the vehicle repairs and maintenance. It's about $25,000 higher than the same time last year, but then again, it's a vehicle repair. It's not like, it's not a same cost every month. It's going to go up and down based on when the vehicle needs it. Okay, next, the other services. First two are telephone. The telephone voice is running slightly less, about eight grand less than, actually, about eight grand more, sorry, than we were last year. We may be finally saving some money on this line. Mr. Rodriguez will come forward in the next couple months with a potential plan to sort of change out our phone system to the next level of technology. So, I will let him speak to that. But we're hoping that that's going to save us money on this line, finally. And then, go down, there's not too much more. A lot of these are small accounts. Then, you get down to transportation services. You see $807,000. And that's because, that's the catch-up for student invoices for September and October, hit in the month of November. So, that's basically two months at once.
I'd like to find out, how many buses are running? How many students are on each bus? Because I know in my neighborhood today, they dropped off a student. If the student was special ed, it was on one of the big buses, not on a small bus. So, I'm kind of curious, because I've seen some of the buses leaving the high schools, and they're running, not with a lot of kids on it. So, questioning whether or not some of this can be condensed.
The one thing with condensing, keep in mind, you only have so much time.
Right.
So, if you're going to send the bus on a longer route, it's not going to get to school on time. And it's even more important in the afternoon, because you've got to be ready to pick up the second tier of schools. So, people say that a lot. I only saw 12 kids on the bus. But if you try to condense that with another one, then all the kids are going to be late for school, or they're going to mess up the second tier. We do look at that. You know, Mr. Rossell will come in during budget season, so maybe if you, if you want to send me an email on that, and then he can speak more to it. Because any point in time, you know, we have so many buses. Okay, and then flipping around to page three, the special ed transportation, you can see the same large number. Once again, they were catching up on the two months of invoices. So, now, we're one month behind, which is what we should be typically, because we don't get the invoice till the month is over. Tuition out of district, looks like we'll be able to stay within budget this year. We do had, we had a new out-of-district, and we had a student move in that had some significant costs, but we still think we should be okay. And we're going to miss our director. Okay, and then looking down, supplies and materials, not too much there. I mean, these are pretty much supply accounts, so they'll go up and down. You can see, if you just take a look, though, third one down, educational supplies, you can see sort of September and October, they're very high, schools opening, they're filling up all their supplies, and then a significant drop-off in November. So, you'll see lower numbers until the end of the year, when they start buying more The indirect cost allocation looks pretty steady. And equipment on page four, you will see, if you look in the first item, equipment, there's a minus 388, 261, under July. That's, that was a journal entry that was put in in error. It's being corrected. That'll disappear next month. It'd probably disappear if I ran the report tomorrow, but this was around a few days ago. Other than that, you can see there's not lots of purchases of equipment. I think the $21,000 under the miscellaneous was that equipment we bought. Well, I think one of the, no, did we buy that with Perkins? I'm not 100% sure, but I think it's CTE-related. Debt service is fine. We've paid the copier payment and the energy-saving payment, so that's what those, the spend year-to-date is. And capital improvements, that $101,000, that's also being adjusted with that same entry. That was the, an adjustment made to last year's books, actually, where it got posted to the wrong month. So, we are 33.3% spent, and that's on basically five out of 12 months, or three out of 10 months, however you look at it. So, either way, it's between 30 and 40 where we want it to be. It's on the lower side. So, as usual, I think, I think we'll be fine. You know, and the reality is, what's, one of the big concerns going forward is not finding enough special ed staff using outside services, which cost more money. And with that, we use outside services. We have SIR funds to do that. When the SIR funds are fully allocated, which is not too-too far away, then that will be the challenge going forward, on how we, how we deal with that specific issue. The number of special ed students really didn't increase this year much at all, but it's finding the appropriate amount of staff. And I know the superintendent's side of the hallway is working on that, so...
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Now, on to the transfer report.
Yes. So, just, I think, five of them. First one is a transfer from Fairgrounds Middle, where they're moving funds from their software and equipment lines to educational supplies, so they could purchase more supplies. New Surles is moving from supplies to equipment, so they can purchase a projector for their art room. The next one is sort of what I mentioned. There was a position, an unfilled staff position, that was in the operating budget. We couldn't fill it, so we're using outside services. So, I made the journal entry, took it out of the labor account, the 51100, and we're putting it into contracted services. So, that will cover most of the cost of that person for the rest of the year. Not all of it, but most of it. So, that's one of those entries I was talking about. The next one, which is the very large one, that's where I took the labor account, the 51412 account, which is the additional hours I'm taking. That's where we charged subs. Now, we're using the SS, so I took it out of the labor account and spread it. It's amongst three, because we code it either by elementary school, middle school, and high school. So, that's just so all the invoices will go through the process. I'll have to, I'll have to keep an eye on that going forward, because we're still using, we're still paying some subs ourselves, if it's a long-term sub. So, there's going to be a mix of some subs in the labor accounts, because we're paying them, and then some subs in the contract services.
Do you know which one of these is middle school, or elementary, middle school, high school?
Yeah, the 350 is elementary, 150 is middle, and 200's high. And the last one is national athletics. Ms. Jengris is transferring money to cover a deficit in medical supplies. The impact testing that all the athletes take in any contact sport cost more this year. It went up. It had been, we had been getting it for about the same price for a while, and then, like most other things, it went up. So, she had to move some money from the, to cover the cost of supplies, medical supplies, going forward. And that is it for the transfers.
Any questions?
You have to approve that, yes.
Because it's over the summer. Okay, I move to approve the FY '23 November transfer report.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else tonight, Mr. Donovan?
That is all I have.
Anything, ladies? Okay, so, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And we're adjourned at exactly 7:45. Thank you all tonight.